Call the meeting to order. Thank you for your patience. Yeah, I should be on. Everybody hear me? Yes. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing afterwards for a moment of silence. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing. It is with great sadness that we announce the death of two district employees. Ronald Murphy, a teacher and football coach at Grossmont High School, passed away on February 14th, 2012, after a hard-fought battle with melanoma. Ron joined our district in 2006 as a special education teacher at Santana High School and spent his last four years as a teacher and head football coach at Grossmont High School. He is survived by his wife of 27 years, Dani, one daughter, two sons, and one granddaughter. Ron felt honored to be a Grossmont High School foothiller and privileged to be around great staff, students, and especially his football players. He will be greatly missed by all who knew him. Frank Yancy, a longtime East County football coach, passed away on February 12th, 2012. Frank, a deputy with San Diego Sheriff's Department, had been the offensive line coach for Valhalla since 2007. He found ways to get the most from his athletes and his players loved him for that. Frank truly loved his players and will be greatly missed. Please join us for a moment of silence for Ron Murphy and Frank Yancy. Thank you. Our Grossmont Union High School District Vision Statement states, "The Grossmont Union High School District is dedicated to providing a safe and collaborative learning environment which supports academic achievement and social development for all students. The Grossmont District operates on the premise that success for every student is dependent upon all groups in the organization, including teachers, administrators, parents, staff, students, and the community working together to support all students in their development as lifelong learners, thinkers, and successful contributors to the community." Moving on to our awards, recognitions of the night. We have a recognition of fourth-quarter outstanding classified employee, Will Moore, technology specialist at Valhalla High School. I call upon Director Jan Brannon to introduce this.[182.84][182.84](APPLAUSE).
President Shield, members of the Board, Superintendent Swinson, Cabinet members, and esteemed colleagues. Tonight, we honor a classified employee whose exceptional service to the district, to the students of the district, deserves special recognition. Allow me to introduce Sam Lund, Assistant Principal at Valhalla High School, who will introduce Will Moore, our fourth honored employee of the 11-12 school year. Sam?
Thank you. And good evening. From the land of vibrant orange and sparkling white, home of the mighty Norseman, it is with great honor I present to you the real Superman, our technology specialist, Dr. Dr. Moore is affectionately called Superman by all staff at Valhalla High School because of his physical size. He is also faster than a speeding bullet, more powerful than a locomotive, and yes, able to leap tall buildings in a single bound. But I call him Superman because that's what he is, a super-man. Will spent 27 years in the Marine Corps, straight out of high school, and he founded the Voices of Victory Christian Ministry in the year 2000. This has a 12-church fellowship that forms a national covenant under Dr. Moore's leadership. This fellowship is also an agency of Feeding America, where he founded a food distribution center in El Cajon, where needy families are provided food throughout every single month. Will finishes bachelor's and master's degree after the Marine Corps in business management, and he completed his PhD in theology and has an honorary doctorate of divinity. But very few people know about that, it's not official, Will, people know about it, because he is so humble about all of his accomplishments. The real reason we call him Superman, though, is because, as Will describes his tech specialist position...
I have been doing so much for so long without anything, now I can do almost anything with nothing.[323.66][323.66](LAUGHTER).
It's very true. We are all amazed at what he can do with his limited budget in terms of time and money. Everyone loves seeing Will in the hallway, as you can tell, and they want to stop and talk to him because he is so funny and outspoken. We all have our favorite Supermanisms. At a recent meeting, we had, "What are we going to do with all of these old outdated computers that are given to us?" And Will said...
You don't look a gift horse in the mouth. You put a saddle on him and ride that bad boy.[358.16][358.16](LAUGHTER).
When I do it, it gets lost in translation.[366.31][366.31](LAUGHTER). Will is the confident force that moves our school forward in these difficult times. He does so many intangible things that it's really hard to describe, but I do know two things. Number one, we all want to grow up and be just like Will Moore. And secondly, when he did win this award, the entire staff let out a roar of approval because they truly love their Superman. Thank you.[398.68][398.68](APPLAUSE).
Thank you very much. I just want to say briefly that, first of all, I thank God for giving me the strength and the energy to do what I do. So you think, I'm thankful for Mary Beth Catherine, the principal, and the staff at Valhalla for allowing me to do what I do, now that they know I do it well.[424.74][424.74](LAUGHTER). I certainly thank for Sam Lund for taking the time to write the award to which I'm very grateful. I also thank the district and its leadership for just making this venue possible. And I'm going to continue to do everything with almost nothing because I realize that the district budget depends on it. So you can expect that. Thank you.[447.84][447.84](APPLAUSE).
We congratulate you on being selected as our fourth-quarter outstanding classified employee for 2011-2012. You began your career with the Grossmont District in September 2000 as technology specialist, and over the past 12 years of employment, you have served the district above and beyond the duties of your position. You are a dedicated, hard-working, and valued employee, whether it be addressing the staff on how to take care of computers on wheels, cows, or helping them with technological needs. Your supervisors and coworkers find you to be a funny, polite, and respectful individual who consistently produces superior results. Your work ethic has been a tremendous asset to Grossmont High School District. It is with great pleasure that I join the members of the governing board in saluting you for your outstanding service to the Grossmont Union High School District. We thank you.[525.54][525.54](APPLAUSE).
And before I depart, I also want to thank my wife of 37 years, as well as my parishioners who are here to support me as well on tonight. I want to say thank you very much.[587.41][587.41](APPLAUSE).
Okay, we have communication from the public. Members of the public who wish to speak to an item on or not on the agenda must file a speaker card indicating name and agenda item to be addressed, and present the card to Tracy McDonald in the front row, and she will deliver them to the Board's secretary. Pursuant to Board Bylaw 9323, comments from the public on agenda items will be heard for 30 minutes, or if necessary, at the conclusion of the business meeting. Speakers will be given a maximum of three minutes to give public comment. A speaker may not exceed a total of three minutes on all items. Board policy limits the total time for public input on each item to 20 minutes. If a member of the public wishes to speak to a board item at the time the item comes up for action, please indicate that on the card, and you will be given an opportunity to speak prior to the action being taken if the total public input on that item has not exceeded 20 minutes. Speakers will see a green light displayed on the podium for the first 2 minutes and 30 seconds. A yellow light will be displayed for the final 30 seconds, and a red light and audible beep will let you know when your three minutes are up. Tonight, we have two cards on agenda and two cards off agenda, so we should have no problem completing that within our 30-minute timeframe. I will call three members, or three members of the public to come up, not that you all come up at the same time, just so that you know who's on deck to hopefully expedite comments. So we will begin with Alexis O'Connor, to be followed by Fran Zumwalt and Tina Nagel, and I apologize if I'm mispronouncing any names. Alexis O'Connor.
Good evening, members of the Board. My name is Alexis O'Connor. I represent SEIU Local 221. Our employees are your custodians, your groundskeepers, and your campus utility workers. You are tonight going to be looking at a financial report from the district, and that's what I'm talking about to you this evening. And I know that as you look at the budget, you are going to be making considerations for layoffs. And I'm petitioning the Board tonight to ask you to spare SEIU from any further layoffs. I passed out some documents to you. I also emailed them to you earlier today, so if you have any questions, you can look them over and email me back, or call me if you have any questions. But if you look at what I've given you, you can see that SEIU has been reduced by over 18% in the last six years, and we are only a total of 4% of the population at Grossmont High School District. Management, however, represents a total of about 7% of the population at Grossmont, and they've only been reduced by a little over 2%. And I wonder why the district management has grown by two employees when the total number of employees is shrinking. The district has lost actually close to 100 employees since 2006. Someone who looks at these numbers may assume that the district thinks that our members are easy to cut because we're the people that you don't see, we're the people out on the grounds, we're the people that work after everybody else goes home. And people may look at these numbers and take it to mean that the district doesn't value the work that we do and the services that we provide to make sure that children have a safe, clean, healthy learning environment every day. So again, I ask you to please prove these assumptions wrong and spare SEIU from any layoffs this year. Thank you.[832.91][832.91](APPLAUSE).
Fran Zumwalt, who will be followed by Tina Nagel and Kathleen Hedberg.
Thank you. My name is Fran Zumwalt, and I represent over 900 teachers, counselors, speech pathologists, school psychologists in the Grossmont District. And it's March, and I'm here again. Layoffs, a reduction in force. It must be getting old. Surely, you are all tired of accepting the same old misguided plan to issue layoffs. Need I remind everyone here of the pattern that has been repeated three of the past four years? In 2007-8, the Board approved the layoff of 100 GEA members as recommended by your executive cabinet and superintendent. All of those layoffs were rescinded by September 2008. In 2008-9, 100 certificated staff received layoff notices yet again as recommended by district administration. And once again, all of those layoffs, all those notices were rescinded by September 2009. There's a pattern here. 2009-10, common sense prevailed. No layoffs were issued. But unfortunately, 2010-11, 60 certificated staff were issued layoff notices, and over 30 provisional layoffs were issued to temporary teachers and counselors. All of those layoffs were rescinded by September 2011, except two. Could those two employees' jobs have been saved? In September 2011, the ending balance for the district is reported in the September unaudited actuals was over $30 million. Of course, those employee jobs could have been saved. It was costly each year of three years to issue layoffs. Costly to pay legal fees, costly to identify, calculate, tabulate who should be given these layoff notices. It was costly and extremely damaging to the morale of employees who have had to endure layoffs time and time and time again. Some of these people have received layoffs for the third time. Do you believe those employees feel loyalty to the Grossmont District? It's being challenged. They do incredible work, but their loyalty is being challenged. Sadly, the Grossmont District Executive Cabinet and Superintendent intend to repeat this pattern of nonsense, this insanity, yet again this year. Today, you, the trustees of the Grossmont District, have the power to stop the madness. You can vote against sending layoff notices to 60 certificated and 30 temporary certificated staff members. Protect these teachers, counselors. Protect these people. We believe you will rescind these layoffs. Why go through this again and again? It's nonsense. It makes no sense. Thank you.[1042.91][1042.91](APPLAUSE).
Tina Nagel, who will be followed by Kathleen Hedberg.
My name is Tina Nagel, and I'm a resident of Santee. A big company called Cogentrix is planning to build a huge power plant next to the Mission Trails Regional Park in Santee. The planned site is in between the Sycamore landfill and Highway 52, just west of the recycle center on Mass Boulevard. This is a huge concern for our neighborhood. Cogentrix is a subsidiary of Goldman Sachs. The proposed power plant would have 11 100-foot-high smokestacks. It would also have 11 huge engines that will cause noise pollution. This will definitely have a huge impact for the wildlife that takes sanctuary at Mission Trails Regional Park. But worst of all, the West Hills High School would be downwind from this power plant. Our children would be subjected to dangerous levels of air pollution. This is a heavy industrial plant and should not be built near a residential area, let alone a wildlife park or a school. The air and noise pollution will be real threats to the wildlife, our way of life in Santee, and most of all, our children. Board members have a duty to protect those students. At the very minimum, postcards or mailers need to be distributed to residents, informing them of something that may adversely affect student health. Politicians need to have the courage and the integrity to inform all who might be affected by this, including West Hills High School students and their parents, and property owners because of loss of property values. We need to do whatever we can to stop this project. We need to inform the families who live here about this. It's a terrible environmental health threat to our community, our wildlife, and our children. There are a lot of outraged people. Santee citizens are organizing to try to stop this. The website to learn more is StopTheSantePowerPlant.org. If anyone would like more information, they can see me after the meeting, and I have more flyers. Again, board members have a duty to protect the students and inform the residents. Thank you for your time.[1209.08][1209.08](APPLAUSE).
Kathleen Hedberg.
Dear Board members, I just wanted to finish what I started, which in January, myself and hundreds of others came to you, the Board, and told you about how you did not adequately notify the public on the proposed boundary change, that you did not have representative boundary committee formed, that you did not involve the community in your decisions. Once brought aware, you did have, tried to correct yourselves, and had two outreach meetings in February, which you then gave us white cards, and you said you were going to address our concerns and write down the details of the problems in your area. And the people did. There were several hundred people who showed up to those meetings. And then you had a big, huge forum meeting on February 16th at West Hills Theater, and hundreds of people showed up, and you gave us 90 minutes to speak. One person spoke for the boundary, who was on the boundary committee. All the other 89 minutes were all the people there who were asking you to take a pause and taking a step back. And then the Board made a decision. And you guys put up on the screen a proposed motion, a motion that you guys had prepared and put together and put up that wasn't on the agenda. We were totally blindsided. We thought you were considering taking a pause. Instead, you had another decision already made. The people were furious. People got up and left. People were screaming. People were upset. Parents, kids. It was very disappointing that you guys made this decision all along and didn't let us know what you're proposing, what your recommendation was ahead of time. And then you gave us the option of choice. However, that doesn't correct a flawed boundary. The boundary was pushed through with the option of choice. Now people are confused. People are getting letters. They don't know where they're going, what they're supposed to do, how to deal with the charter areas, which then was an afterthought. Anyways, I'm just very concerned with the decision you guys did in pushing this through when there are a lot of flaws in the boundaries, and just very disappointed. That's all.
Okay, moving on to public report of action taken in closed session. In accordance with Government Code 5495-7.1 and 5495-7.9, Member Schreiber.
Thank you. I have somewhat of a lengthy report tonight, so bear with me. In closed session, the governing board reviewed the findings and facts, the conclusion of law, and any written objection to the same, which were presented by staff on student matters. As a result, I recommend the following action: stipulated suspended expulsions. I move to approve the suspended expulsions in cases 6 and 7.
Second. I'm sorry, discussion? Please vote.
No, it's you this time.
That's because they traded our boxes. They thought we might get lucky. Mine's not working again. You want to try one more time?
See, it wasn't me. It wasn't me.
Okay, I guess we move on to a voice vote again tonight, and I trust that we are looking into obtaining a new voting system. Yes. Please vote. Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
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 Stipulated suspended expulsions. I move to approve the stipulated suspended expulsions in cases 65 through 79.
Second.
Discussion? Please vote.
Aye.
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 Revoke expulsions. I move to revoke expulsions in case number 14.
Second. Discussion? Please vote.
Aye.
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 Student Matters pursuant to Education Code 51241C. I move to approve to waive the physical education requirement pursuant to Education Code 51241C for students 5 through 8.
Second. Discussion? Please vote.
Aye.
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 Okay, the rest I don't need your assistance. This is reading out. Thank you. Potential litigation. In closed session, the governing board approved settlement of pending dispute with Steel Canyon Charter School over special education funding confirming Steel Canyon's status as a school of the district for special education purposes for the 2012-2013 school year, and Steel Canyon's option under its charter to become its own LEA in future years. The roll call vote was five yes, zero no. In Public Employee Matters in closed session, the governing board took action to release the following administrative employees from the indicated positions and reassign them to the classroom pursuant to Education Code Section 44951, effective at the end of the 2011-2012 school year, and directed the superintendent or designated to send out appropriate legal notices. Employee number 187 through 410, Principal on Special Assignment. Employee number 298-617, Assistant Principal. Employee number 416-232, Assistant Principal. And employee number 439-415, Director 2. The roll call vote was five yes, zero no. In closed session, the governing board took action to reassign the following administrative employee from the indicated position and reassign them as referenced pursuant to Education Code Section 44951, effective at the end of 2011-2012 school year, and directed the superintendent or designated to send out appropriate legal notices. Employee numbers 472-119, 1.0 Title I Program Compliance Coordinator to 1.5 Title I Program Compliance Coordinator and 1.5 Classroom Teacher. The roll call vote was five yes, zero no. While this is difficult to read because of all the verbiage, it's just difficult because of the matter that's at hand, so... In closed session, the governing board individually considered and took action to non-reelect the following probationary certificated employees pursuant to Education Code Section 44929.21B, so that each employment terminates effective at the end of the 2011-2012 school year, and directed the superintendent or designated to send out appropriate legal notices. Employees 511-006, 127-862, 142-132, 358-132, and 493-508. The roll call vote was five yes and zero no. In closed session, the governing board took action to non-reelect or release all temporary certificate employees listed on Resolution 2012-39 pursuant to Education Code 44954, effective upon the last day, excuse me, of this current year, or if different, upon the expiration of any applicable temporary or other employment contract, and directed the superintendent or designated to send out appropriate legal notices. The roll call vote was four yes, zero no, and one absent. In closed session, the governing board approved a resignation agreement for certificated employee number 116-055. The roll call vote was five yes, zero no. End of report.
Thank you. Moving on for the approval of the agenda, there is a deletion, given what happened in closed session. Item 8(c)(2), consideration of and action on request for material revision of the Steel Canyon Charter is deleted. And there is a correction to item 9(c)(10), approval to amend agreement with 610 and Associates for mandated cost claim services. The fiscal impact should read $8,818.34. Could I have a motion and second to discuss and approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Please vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. Approval of minutes. Could I have a motion and second to approve the minutes of the regular governing board meeting of February 9th, 2012?
So moved.
Second. Discussion? Please vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. Could I have a motion and second to approve the minutes of the special governing board... Could I have a motion and second to approve the minutes of the special governing board meeting of February 16th, 2012?
So moved.
Second. Discussion? Please vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. Moving on to the superintendent's report. Superintendent Swenson.
Thank you. We have a brief superintendent's report and a couple of other reports that you will see this evening that we are anxious for you to set your eyes on. It was, I want to share with you, we have become very aware of the issue in Santee with the Peker Power Plant. And as one of the member of the public spoke to this evening, we have some, let me just show you real quickly where it's located and then I'll come back to that slide. This is an overhead view of the area. And just to orient you, here is the West Hills High School campus down in the lower right-hand side. The landfill up in this area, and the proposed Peker Power Plant is down here. When we became aware of this, we began trying to gather more information. We, just about a month ago, I think, was the first time we heard anything really directly about it. The plan is for a plant that's, as you heard earlier, 100 megawatt consisting 11 natural gas-fired generators with 100-foot smokestacks. And their plan at this time is to start construction in May of 2013. As a school district, our main concerns would be with pollutants that are coming from the plant, noise generated by the plant, traffic impacts in and around our campus, and the visual impact of this structure. In a vicinity, it appears to be, the most recent information we have, it's about 3,000 feet away from the campus. But if you remember the image of the overhead, it certainly is in a proximity where people on the campus would more than likely be looking up at those smokestacks on a fairly regular We've had Bob Keisling, our executive director of facilities, meeting with staff from the company that is proposing building this project. He has toured the proposed site of the project, attended a couple of meetings, both community meetings, and has met with staff from the construction firm, and has requested a lot of additional information. I'll pass some of that along to you in one of my next updates in terms of some specifics we're looking for. And I would like to let the board know that the district will be drafting a letter outlining our specific concerns as a school district and ask for complete responses from the construction firm on all of those issues, and we will share that information with the board as we move forward. I know that the city of Santee is also involved in taking a look at this project and has some concerns as well. And so we want to make sure that we, if this is something that's coming in our neighborhood, that our interests are watched out for, so.
A question. The Sante City Council would take action to approve or not approve? Is that in their jurisdiction or whose jurisdiction is it?
Well, they're very much like we are. They're an interested party, and they have registered their concerns with the project also. We are not aware at this time of active opposition. Instead, they're asking, they voiced their concerns and are asking for responses to those concerns.
Jim?
Here's what I've been told, that it's technically not in Santee, it's just over the boundary in San Diego's jurisdiction.
Okay. Okay.
No, that's what I've heard. I don't know that that's accurate.
I believe that is accurate, and I know, go ahead.
So it's San Diego, but we're interested party, also with Sante City Council, on the ramifications, if you will. So is this a leased piece of property that the San Diego County is leasing them? Is there a revenue exchange for this?
Mr. Keisling, can you answer that question?
I mean, what's the benefit? What's the benefit?
It's a private entity that will be providing power on contract to San Diego Gas and Electric, but Bob will tell you more about the ownership issues.
Right, this is a private company, and they're making a proposal to SDG&E to provide this service for them. It covers times when they're at their peak power and at times when their solar plans don't work. So if the sun is clouding, there are solar panels that are bringing power in, this would go on. And at times of peak demand, this would go on. Is that your question?
Okay, so it's an auxiliary power unit?
It's an auxiliary power plant. It would run, what they said was it'll run about 43% of the time at the maximum. They have a maximum number of hours they can run.
Bob, you can confirm this is City of San Diego property?
Correct. It's in the City of San Diego, like Mr. Kelly said. City of Santee has a prime interest in it as well, and they're treating both cities as kind of equals, because Santee would be the closest to provide emergency services and other kinds of things that might be needed there.
So did the City of San Diego bring this to our attention, or we just found it, that it was going to happen? And what's the city's position on this?
Which city? Santee?
No, isn't City San Diego is allowing this, right?
The way this works is the California Energy Commission is the one that agrees to these power plants or not. It's not the City of San Diego, it's not the City of Santee. All those parties are our interested parties, just like we are, in how this is going to work or not work.
So it's all private?
What's all private?
It's private.
No, the California Commission is a public agency that oversees any power plant that's going to be built.
Oh, okay.
So they're filling out their environmental document right now, one of which, one part of which is the public input.
Okay.
And so we're providing our public input, just like the Speaker was providing input, as well as the City of Santee and the City of San Diego.
But the plant would be privately owned and operated on contract with SDG&E, correct?
That's the best of my knowledge. That's how it'll work, yes.
So it's somewhat a private entity?
Yeah, I mean, we assume it would be taxable property, because it'd be a private entity.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Any idea how they picked that spot?
What they said was they picked the spot for several reasons. One was that there's an existing landfill there, and there's not, it's a compatible use with a landfill, okay? Secondly, there's a major transmission line that goes right by there, which is that blue line. And so they could tie into that transmission line without a lot of extra transmission poles and extra work. And part of the equation was that East County was a little bit underserved by SDG&E. That's one thing, that one area that they were worried about. And so this provides it in, so they're trying to minimize the number, amount of transmission lines that they would have to provide. So those were the three reasons they cited in their, in their report.
You know, I'm just a little bit skeptical that there's probably almost zero San Diego City voters in that area.
Correct.
And they would put it on the extreme, extreme boundary of San Diego City, right beside Santee, where none of their voters would hold them accountable and object. It's just, that's interesting. But also, as you know, just north of there, there are thousands of acres of no man's land, where there's no population at all. Why would they put it so close, not only to a population, but near a high school, thousands of students in it? And by the way, if they want to be near that transmission line, why wouldn't they be on the other side of that transmission line or the other side of the dump, as opposed to so close to West Hills?
I can't answer that one.
I'm guessing some of it has to do with the roadway access, and it's not very far. If they build it out further, they're going to have to create access roads too, right, Bob?
Right. Yeah, they would have to build roads to it. You're right. This is right off the main road. The other thing about the City of San Diego, your speculation, I think, is interesting, but the City of San Diego really has no say over this either, just like the City of Santee. It's the California Energy Commission that actually is going to decide whether it gets built or not. So the City of San Diego could have the same amount of complaints, if you follow me, but the California Energy Commission is the one that'll decide, based on all those input.
And there's three members of this energy commission?
Say it again.
There's three members of this energy commission?
No, there's more than that. Maybe five or seven, I can't remember. I can dig that out for you if you're interested.
Okay.
So you'll be presenting a letter, drafting?
We'll be drafting a letter.
And that'll go to them, and what's the timeline, do you think?
Well, soon. We wanted to get your feedback, if you had any specific things, but other than that, we'll start meeting on it tomorrow or next day and draft the letter next week.
And their timeline is May 2013?
Correct.
So when is their deadline for hearing from the community? Do you know that?
They have another public hearing coming up on March 22nd, where they will take input from the public. It'll be held at the Mission Trails Park.
So that's one of those things, that if there is opposition?
Correct.
We all need to be there.
That would be the time to let people know, yeah. The public will have that opportunity to share, and obviously, interested parties like our school district, like the City of Santee and others, will be represented and put forward our concerns.
Okay.
The main thing, though, is we want to get a letter into them, because that puts us on record, and they have to answer the letter in their final document to the, to the energy commission. Mr. Kelly?
So once again, the yellow line is where the existing road is?
Uh...
That line right there.
No, I think it's the green line coming in underneath the Sycamore Canyon landfill.
Well, there is a...
The yellow line is a transmission line from the power plant over to a substation up there, and then a tie-in to the blue line.
Where is the road?
It's right underneath the Sycamore Canyon landfill name.
Okay. Where is the road to the dump? I don't see it on there.
It's right underneath the thing that says Sycamore Landfill Road.
Okay.
It's right underneath that.
So that's the road right there?
Correct.
So everybody who goes to the dump passes that power plant?
Yes.
Shake your hand. So once again, if it needs to be near a road, an access road, why wouldn't they put it at the northernmost part?
Those are all good questions, and we can put that in our letter, you know, that we'd recommend that they move it in a different direction to minimize the impact on the school. We've asked them to do a number of things on this. One is to give us a report just on the school itself in terms of pollutants, you know? Where do these pollutants go when they come out of the stack? Do any of them land on the school? If they do, how bad are they? What is, you know, just give us an idea of what we're talking about here. We really don't know. But yes, they could move it somewhere else potentially. They have an, they have an option on the piece of land that you see there now, and they would have to revise their, you know, their land purchase, but...
Bob, you've also asked for a visual depiction, computer-generated, to see if you can actually, because there's a ridge line there, and we're not sure yet the elevation of this plant and whether you can see that from the West Hills property. Is that...
If you see that line across the top? That's a fire road on the top of a ridge line, and that's, the power plant is behind that ridge, so we may or may not have any visual impacts. But what they're going to do is they're going to do a artist's rendering, I guess, of what we would see from the school, see whether we see the stacks or not. The same thing the City of Santee is concerned about, by the way, is the stacks and the visual appearance. You know, the first thing you see when you come into Santee is a power plant that's not really the best. Other questions?
How high is the ridge? And how high is it?
Well, that's what they're going to have to show us. It depends on where they grade out the site. In other words, if they grade it extra low on the valley that they're in, then you may not see the stacks at all. If they grade it so that it comes out at a higher level, the stacks may be very visible. It's a little hard to tell without the rendering of how it's going to look, and that's what they're...
And that's just one of the issues.
One of the issues, and one of the things we've asked them to do, and so far, they've agreed to do it. I don't know, you know, I don't know what they're going to do exactly, but... So as we go into this more, we'll keep you informed, is what we see.
Thank you, Bob.
Well, thank you for representing us.
Next item, just quickly, if you remember, a month ago, we asked for the beginning of a review of our bond program. On Tuesday of this week, I met with the parties that are putting that report together, Katie Wright and Bob Keisling, and several other staff from GAFCON and from our District Facilities Office. They presented me with a work in progress. And this little binder's not very full yet, but what I do have is what's going to be in it, and we had a chance to talk through quite a bit of it. A month from now, the board will receive the final report, and we'll probably need to be scheduling some time to really look into it and have some conversations around the recommendations that are going to come out of this bound review. But just so you know, it's going to include an executive summary, a program financial summary. I think that's of high interest to everybody. Where are we at, and what have we spent? What do we have left? And what's happening with the funding situation in terms of state bonds and that kind of support? We will have a campus-by-campus improvement analysis, including all of our campuses, including our two charter high schools, Chaparral, where the work training center, and the 12th High School Project. There'll be, there'll be an analysis on every one of those campuses as pertains to the bond program. There'll also be programs analysis, and that's where we're going to have a chance to take a look at the discussion around the multipurpose facility performing arts center issue, which is generating a lot of interest across the district, and also our commitment that was made in the bond of the career technical educational programs, and how is that playing out in terms of the facility side. We'll take a look at the program schedule and the cash flow, and that is something that's changing fairly dramatically because of the slowdown of the issuance of state building bonds. And preliminary look at that now has our bond program life going out into like 2021, more than likely. So it's just, it's really an interesting factor that's sort of beyond our control. Operational cost analysis, program staffing, and overhead analysis, some of those things are going to be affected by the slowdown in the calendaring of the work. And so we hope to come to you with a very thorough analysis and several recommendations for the board to consider, as well as just to get the board's reaction to some of the issues around programs and where we're going to go with certain types of facilities on our campuses. I was very impressed with the preliminary report I heard on Tuesday, and encouraged that you're going to be provided with very detailed information and an opportunity to do something I think we need to do more often, is sort of to take the temperature, see where we're at. There's so much good work being done through this bond program, and there's so much good work left to do. And I know that as a board, you take very seriously your obligation to make sure we're using, doing the very best we can in using the taxpayers' dollars as efficiently as we can in the service of all of the kids in this district. So that will be an April item for us.
Do you have an April special board?
Well, I will need to have some conversation about that yet. I'm not quite sure what the actual completion of the report will generate for us, so we'll have to see. We may have to consider that, though. Just an update for you on the California Voting Rights Act issue. Remember that we have engaged legal counsel, and we have received a couple of requests for some information from them, and a little bit of an update just this afternoon. They are currently in the process of reviewing and analyzing past elections in the East County area, going back through several election cycles, not just school board elections, but city council elections and other types of boards as well. And all of that data will be included in her analysis of the existence of or absence of racially polarized voting in the region. She believes that that information will be, she'll be able to put that all together to us, that we'll get the report well in advance of our April board meeting, and we'll have additional information for you then, and may very well have enough information for the board to begin moving towards a decision on this topic. So that continues to be working, and we will keep you posted as the information comes back from our legal counsel. Lastly, a quick mention, we, Members Schreiber and Hoy joined core cabinet members last Thursday night at the district offices of the Poway School District for a CSBA workshop. It was actually put on by one of the firms that serves our district, had a couple of people there to sort of, the focus was on the Form 700 Statement of Economic Interest, which everyone does every year, who sits on a school board or works in an administrative role in a school district. And it was, before we got to the topic of the night, there must have been a full hour of conversation around Brown Act issues and communications with board members and interactions and that sort of thing, as well as some general discussion about board protocols and procedural things. And I know the board has a lot of interest in that. I will let, what I wanted to let you know tonight is that they are offering to come and do free workshops with school boards around any of these or all of these topics. And I think that it might be in our interest at some point in the very near future to schedule a special workshop where the board would get this kind of information, have the kinds of conversations they want to have around protocols, procedurals, boardsmanship, and all those sorts of topics. I think it's in the best interest of a well-operated school district and a well-functioning school board. So we will look at some date options and ask you to be looking at your calendars in the very near future and see if we can schedule something like that. And that concludes the superintendent's report. Last are questions.
I just have a follow-up. I know Scott was going to bring something back to us. Him and Catherine are working on some information that would probably align our policies, which we do every two years. So that was good to know with what the law is, and there was a little bit of new law as far as the Form 700. So that will be coming to us in February, I mean, April. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, since our student board representative was unable to join us tonight, we will skip item B, moving on to state of the schools update report on Grossmont, Valhalla, and West Hills High School. Call upon Assistant Superintendent Teresa Kemper.
Great. Tonight is the last in our series of state of the school updates. Tonight is the last in our series of State of the School Updates. This is a mid-year report of how schools are meeting the superintendent's strategic plan to increase student achievement. Tonight's presentation features Dan Barnes, Principal at Grossmont High School, Marybeth Caston, Principal of Valhalla, and Paul Dottramont, Principal of West Hills High School.
Because of getting ready for the next presentation, I had to start it early and now it's locked and it's doing a little rolling thing, so it'll be soon.
Is this the Microsoft Blue Screen of Death or...
No, no, no.
Okay.
We're almost there.
We're almost there. We're going to ask, the principal's going to have a seat. Yeah.
Yeah.
You need your bag?
Sit in front of you.
Okay. Okay. Take it back to... I don't think she didn't post it. Oh. Our major subgroups include our special need students, our socio-economically disadvantaged students and our English learner students. As a result of, you know, the self-assessment that we've done, our delivery system for special need students is, you know, next year, we will be including all of our special need students in college prep-level courses. Our English learner students are just now become, have just now become a significant subgroup. In response to that, next year, we will be offering our first sheltered courses to meet the needs of our English learner students, one in our science department and the second in our social science department. The school is in change, as the Santee community is as well. We've been working very hard the last several years to try to help foster cultural and social understanding amongst our students of their peers. Along those lines, West Hills High School, the last couple of years, has sent some of the highest numbers of students to Camp Lead and I can tell you, the students come back, they're changed. They are very changed people and I think that they definitely see their school and the students around them in a more positive light. One of the other things that we've been doing the last several years is what we call a Unity Day or a Day of Understanding, where we work with our 10th grade students on this program. We also bring in 50 upperclassmen. Juniors and seniors have also been through the program to help facilitate. And the whole day is Day of Understanding, you know, a series of activities where they really get down to helping more about their classmates, the struggles that their classmates have, which oftentimes they find out are shared struggles, so they start to really see that instead of being different, they're really a lot more alike. As a result, what we have seen over the last three years of California Healthy Kids Survey data is that our students are indicating that incidents of being bullied because of their race or ethnicity are on the decline. Incidents of students being bullied in general are on the decline. The climate of the school has changed in a very positive way and the data shows that. One of the specific kinds of interventions that West Hills High School offers for students, particularly our 9th grade students, is we offer a year-long geography class, but where I feel like the real benefit to the students comes is this is this team of teachers, they've been working very collaboratively over the last couple of years to, through using, you know, the Google toolset, have been exposing the students, and I believe they're really kind of on the cutting edge here in our district, of exposing our students to the different types of tools that Google has to offer. And the students have been creating their own websites, they do a lot of communication as groups this way, and I think it's really helped the students to become more engaged with the curriculum. One of the new programs that we're particularly proud of, that we started at West Hills High School this year, is a Bring Your Own Device Program. I think we all know that students, when it comes to technology, they're becoming very proficient, sometimes more proficient than us, and for a long time, we've actually tried to fight off or discourage students from bringing their own, you know, smartphones or computers to school. And we have a couple of teachers on our campus, Dan McDowell and Ruben Hoffman, who are really trying to embrace the students' knowledge. And what we've done is we've set up wireless networks in these teachers' classrooms and they're encouraging the students to bring their own smartphones. Those students who don't have one, we have purchased iPods for the students to use and those teachers throughout the year have been developing curriculum that allows the students to access different components of their smartphones, the internet, they've been using Google. Students are able to sit and give comment back on speakers in the class or they're able to submit different documents or work that they're doing in the classroom. And so far, it's turned out pretty well. We hope that going forward, we'll be able to expand this program and bring more students and more teachers to this Bring Your Own Personal Program. So we feel like we're making positive steps, but there's work to be done there.
I'm Marybeth Caston, Principal of Valhalla High School, a twice-recognized California distinguished school. Over the last several years, we have had a change in our student demographic. We have had an increase in the percentage of English language learners on campus. Valhalla reflects the change in East County that we've been experiencing over the last several years with the large influx of refugees. Our English language learners are supported in the development, through development of our master's schedule. Students are in a two-hour block of English language development as well as sheltered instruction in the other core academic areas. The special education students are mainstreamed into general education classes and may also receive support through resource classes. In addition, students will have included in their schedule a support class, a support period, a tutorial period, where they do have that opportunity to receive supplemental instruction in all core content areas. In addition to the support classes that are provided for special education and English language learners, we also have intensification courses in our humanities and Algebra I courses, where students are enrolled for additional support in those areas, in those content areas, in preparation for the California High School Exit Exam. A wide variety of measures are used to monitor student progress and to intervene when students may be struggling and can benefit from the support programs that are offered on campus. The measures that Valhalla looks at include these CSTs, the High School Exit Exam, as well as AP exams, the DNF rate and the number of students that are completing the UC requirements, the A through G requirements for the UC, CSU system. We're excited about a new approach that we are taking to help prepare students for the California High School Exit Exam. Students have taken two diagnostic assessments as indicators of performance on the High School Exit Exam and using that information and that data, we have identified students to participate in a series of seminars. These seminars include test-taking strategies, reading strategies, deconstructing vocabulary, deconstructing the writing prompt and preparing for the writing prompt. This year, we'll be instituting a STAR VIP program that will provide privileges and recognition for students for their performance and their achievements on the California Standards Test. In support of our avid program in developing a college-going culture, Wednesday is our College Shirt Day, so that we are drawing attention and focus to high expectations for students after graduation. Valhalla offers 14 Advanced Placement courses and approximately one-third of our students are enrolled in at least one Advanced Placement course. Our students are better prepared for college admission by completing three years of science as the UC minimal requirement is two years. It makes our students much more competitive for college admission. Our students are performing better on the EAP, which is an indicator for college readiness for English courses, and that is attributed to the work that is being done with the Ecap Writing Project. Our teachers have been in partnership with San Diego State and Grossmont Quimaca Colleges over the last several years. We believe our students can achieve and we are seeing that they are achieving.
I am Dan Barnes, Principal at Grossmont High School. Most recent trend at our school is probably change. Change in our buildings, brand-new buildings going up, very old buildings from the 1930s coming down. Change in our demographics, we've had a big increase in our ELL population, primarily Hispanic three, four years ago, to primarily and mostly now Arabic-speaking students, which has been an interesting change. And, you know, as a history, former history teacher, it's exciting to meet a first-generation immigrant group that comes in and is wanting to be here, is wanting to learn, wanting to learn the culture, wanting to learn the language, and so there's kind of a buzz and excitement in that group of students. At Grossmont, we have several support systems for our struggling students. The interventions are both English and math, specifically in algebra and specifically in reading. We also use Study Island. We have three courses for California High School Exit Exam preparation through Study Island and then our biggest recovery efforts are through the E2020 courses, which we have throughout our day. We offer students opportunity to regain credit that they lost. Some of our new efforts to improve our CSTs, improve our KC, improve our A through G rates, we've done just a couple of examples. One in our sophomore English courses, that team has developed a plan where they have taken the five writing prompts needed in the exit exam and they are working on those each week. Each week, they take a new prompt, each week, they give a new essay test and each week, they calibrate in the team and they use the same rubric and take a look at how the students did and how the other teachers compared across the board and compared those students and then kind of came back as a team and if needed, rework the lesson or rework the prompt. Another thing that we're doing this, going into next year, is we have something that we've created and had for a long time called the Excel Program for Freshmen and it's kind of a school within a school. And this next year, the focus for the Excel Program will be increasing our honors numbers. We're adding an AP Biology next year and we're adding an AP Stats class next year, which gives us quite a range of AP courses and rigor. And the Excel Program's going to be kind of freshman first-year intro for, it's an intervention for the middle-of-the-road kid. It's that so many times, we work on the far-blow basic and the top-end kid, but we're going to take a step here and intervene and try and increase our honors numbers and increase our readiness for college. At Grossmont High School, the most important pieces of data that we look at to gauge our success with our students would be our A through G completion rate. We also take a look at our AP scores and how students are doing on those tests throughout the year. And then the last piece, probably the other big piece, is our SAT scores, how our students fare in the SAT. We think college readiness and completion of the A through G UC completion rate is a priority. We're going to try and develop more kids at the honors level early on so that they're ready for the next 10th grade, 11th grade succession of AP courses. Our master's schedule is developed around several things, but one of them is making sure that we offer a complete array of A through G courses and that we take a look at that target every year of completion rate and that we try and meet it every year. So keeping rigor and keeping success in that rigor is difficult, but that's our goal. Grossmont High School academics, it comes first, but a big piece of that academic success has got to come with your school climate. We have a resource center called the GRC, Grossmont Resource Center, where we are able to help a whole bunch of kids. The GRC is not only for students that are in need of mental wellness and mental support for the mental wellness, but it's also an area that has been our focus point for students receiving a scholarship. We've had anywhere from 1.5 to 1.7 million dollars' worth of scholarships come through that resource center to help our students.
I would, as you get, if you have questions for the principals, just maybe to guide your thinking a little bit, you were given a copy this evening of a summary. This is our third and final, actually, I guess we have to count the non-video presentation that began it all with our friends from Chaparral, but I really want to commend the principals and their teams and the faculties on our campuses. You've had a chance through these reports to get a little better look at what efforts are underway and there are significant efforts that are underway on our campuses to help our kids achieve a higher academic success, to serve sort of the strategic plan items that are included in your booklet. But if you look on the third page, you'll see the summary of focus areas that we heard a lot from, from each of the different principals and these three folks are here this evening to try to answer any questions or hear any comments anyone on the board would like to make, so feel free.
Will this be on our website under a strategic plan? Is this like someone breaking it down a little bit?
Well, that's a good idea. We just got these this afternoon, so yeah.
No, I think it's great.
I think that may be where they'll land and we'll continue to, we're looking at ways to provide access to the videos as well, so that people can look at them.
Oh, that would be, that would be very good. Because I think it's important and it makes it so personable when you have the principals there talking about their school and they have snapshots of the school site, so I think it's great. I have a question on the shelter program or shelter course for your ELL. Where did I hear that? Was that Paul?
I think all of us, there's kind of a...
Okay, pardon me. What does that mean exactly?
I did work at the school with the largest ELL population, so I should be able to answer it. A sheltered course, it's basically a specifically designed, they're specifically designed teaching strategies. You're teaching the same content, for example, let me just say world history class. You're teaching the same content to the students that they would get in any world history class, but these students don't have the language skills a lot of times to access that content, so a teacher would, they've had specialized training on teaching strategies that help the students to bridge that vocabulary, that language gap.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that's a sheltered course within a bigger course setting, or is that still...
Let's say, let's say, let's say we had 10 sheltered courses. You know, if your population is 50% English learners, you're probably going to have five of them being sheltered, you know, to meet the needs of the students.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
And then, I'm, I'll go ahead. Should I just go ahead? Thank you.
Just leave a little air.
I know. I will. I look at some of these things and where you want to go and some of the things each one of you talked about and your plans for the next year, and I guess this isn't to you so much as it's to the cabinet, the superintendent, this board. You know, we get so excited about moving forward, but tonight, we have to cut some of the programs that have helped move us forward in some areas. And all of our schools, I think, have really benefited from Camp Lead and we talked about this and you mentioned it again tonight, and I know that has to take on some kind of reconfiguration, if you will, I guess, because of budget cuts, but I know you talked about other things that you want to bring on. Is, do you see, have you already made those decisions for next year that you can still provide those kind of new ideas that you want to bring forward? I'm talking generically, I can't remember writing them all down, what you're, I think Dan had a thing that he wanted to bring on for next year.
Yes, that's an existing program that should maintain itself. We're just, we're bringing up the rigor, so it's the Excel, our freshman, school, going to school, team of four teachers. We should be able to maintain it. Depends on, you know, always depends on the numbers of students coming in and out, but the hope is to maintain that portion and make the rigor go up, so it'll be an honors level course instead of just the...
Well, I like the preparation of the AP, of the honors AP and that graduation.
Yeah.
That's very good. I think that's kind of all the questions. Thank you very much. I think you guys do a great job and I'd love for it to be on the, on the website if we could. I think that's important. Thank you.
Apologize for the voice, but thank you for the report. I just want to use this time, though, to plug something that isn't mentioned here. I mean, we, this is focused and it's a good thing and it's on college-bound and getting kids up to speed, but this Saturday is Art Smarts and all of our schools offer outstanding art programs and it'll be out at Quimaca College from 8:00 to 4:00, I believe, and all these schools, all of our schools are involved in this and we don't show it up here, but that's part of high school, too, and I just wanted to mention that. The other thing is I'm continuing to get offensive pieces of literature. Couple of, or a month ago, apparently I was a student at Granite Hills and now I'm a student at Valhalla, showing once again, I can't stick at any one school. And it says my grade is 54. I find that really offensive.
Well, we actually...
Because I never spent more than six years in any one grade.
I think we actually did the math on that, Mr. ... I think we actually did the math on that, Mr. Hoyen.
It's fairly accurate.
Yeah, I, it actually is accurate, I figured it out.
I think that's a copy of the Casey readiness report that came out of the assessment office that has been a tremendous tool for us to help prepare students for the high school exit exam using those diagnostic assessments, and so the, and the students have been very responsive when they received that information. It's a great snapshot, if you will, you know, all that information in one location. Math teachers received a copy, the English teachers received a copy, they've had those conversations with the students, and in addition, that one of the other strategies that we're using is those students, now that they have that, kind of that predictor, are going to be participating in an additional Saturday session this weekend in preparation for next week's high school exit exam. But that, that report has been tremendously helpful to us in identifying students, absolutely.
And to make a point, these are individualized to every student that's going to be taking the Casey in our district. This is, this is something we can be very proud of as a district, because it really does personalize it for our students.
But where you got these grades? Beyond me.
For Mr. Hoyes, the 54th grade student, yeah. Well, thank you.
Well, aren't you happy to be a part of the Orange Nation?
Yeah. I actually like that BYOD also too. That's, are we doing that, or is that something you're just doing at Valhalla?
We're just doing it...
I mean, at West Hill.
Yeah, we're just doing it in a couple of classes, it was a pilot program for this year.
I think that's kind of fun, you know, so get some, so you're doing kind of the technology side of it, so they learn how to navigate it and the different web-based things. I think that's a great idea. Good job.
Can't beat 'em, Joy.
Absolutely, absolutely. Good job.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on to our Library Services Committee Report, Superintendent Swenson. If you remember, last year we indicated to the board that in response to some of the discussion that came up during taking a look at staffing decision, that sort of thing on the campus, there was, there was a lot of discussion around library services in our district, and the idea that perhaps, it hadn't been clearly defined, it was certainly near and dear to the hearts of an awful lot of people who are educators everywhere, but as a district, we hadn't really stopped and taken a close look at what it is our libraries are like here in the 21st century, what are they providing to our students, what do we want them to provide to our students. And so we formed a committee, which is what we do, to bring together some of these talented people and people from across the district, and take a look at library services and make sure that we do clearly understand what it is our libraries are all about. Steve Montgomery, the librarian at Elcone Valley High School, was the one I tapped on the shoulder and asked him if he'd consider helping me put this committee together, and he's done a terrific job, along with folks from our Ed Services Division. And he has, I think, some of his colleagues here this evening as well, and I would like to invite Steve to come forward and present you with a report on library services here in our district.
Thank you very much, and good evening, governing board members and Superintendent Swenson and Cabinet, have to use these. As Superintendent Swenson said, my name is Steve Montgomery, and I've been privileged this year to serve as the co-chair with Superintendent Swenson of the District's Library Services Committee. I've been asked to report to you this evening on the work of the committee, so let's begin with our purpose. We were asked by the superintendent to examine the current and future role of library services in our district, and to do that, it's been our good fortune to have an outstanding group of individuals participating in the process. I'd like to ask all those committee members in the audience this evening to please stand and be recognized. Committee members? Thanks for joining me, and thanking them for their service and thoughtful contributions to the work we've done so far. Teresa Kemper didn't stand up, but she was also part of that. And none of this work would be possible without our dedicated staff at Library Media Services and the tireless work of our site library technicians. Before the committee met for the first time, we conducted a needs assessment survey with district staff members. 456 staff members responded to the online survey representing classified, certificated, and administrative staff. The data that we gathered from that survey was presented at our first day-long Library Services Committee meeting in November of last year, and members spent time evaluating the data and creating a list of priorities for library services based on those staff responses. At our first meeting, members also had an opportunity to examine the professional standards for school librarians. We looked at the American Association of School Librarians Standards for the 21st Century Learner, and at the California State Board of Education's Model School Library Standards for California Public Schools. In examining the current standards for librarianship, members commented on how dramatically the librarian's role has shifted in recent years, from helping students find most of their information in book form to helping students find the great majority of their information in electronic form. We have provided copies of these standards in the packet you received this evening. The committee learned that teacher librarians must also be familiar with Common Core Subject Area Standards, National Educational Technology Standards, and Career Technical Education Pathways, so that they can teach information literacy skills to students in context. In January of this year, we launched our second needs assessment survey, this one focused on students, and we had an amazing 2,724 responses from students at all nine high schools, representing all grade levels and a wide variety of academic abilities. The data we gathered from the student survey was presented at our next Library Services Committee meeting, that was February 8th of this year, and members spent time evaluating that data and creating a list of priorities for library services based on those student responses, which brings us to this evening's presentation, and to the committee's first recommendation. The committee recommends that the district support the development and immediate implementation of a library services action plan, based on what students and staff tell us they need in order for library services to be a meaningful and relevant contributor to the academic success of all students in our district. The action plan should establish priorities for library services now and provide vision and direction for future library services. The committee affirms that the district's current library services program already has many of the elements that patrons desire, chief among them, the active presence of a certificated teacher librarian. When asked to rank the relative importance of having a teacher librarian on-site to provide instruction to students on a wide range of information resources, 46% of staff said that it is essential. And when you look at the combined numbers, you see that over 93% of our staff said that having a teacher librarian provide instruction to their students about information resources is important, very important, or essential. And when we asked specifically about having a teacher librarian on-site to provide instruction on effective online research skills, nearly 47% said it is essential, and 96% of staff said that it is important, very important, or essential, to have the presence of a teacher librarian who can provide direct instruction on effective online research skills. And when the committee asked students what level of assistance or instruction they needed with a wide range of library and research skills, it became clear by looking at the top 10 needs up there expressed by our students, that 21st century librarians must be able to teach students how to research college and career options, prepare for high-stakes tests, conduct research online using appropriate academic resources from school, home, and anywhere else they have access to an internet-capable device, and the proper ways to cite the sources of the information they use. And yes, students tell us they still need a well-read professional who can match the right student with the right book at the right time. Staff responses also confirmed a need for teacher librarians to actively collaborate with classroom teachers on the development and implementation of curriculum that teaches students essential research and information literacy skills. As we know, technology is now central in the lives of our students, so it's no surprise that technology topics were high on the priority lists of both students and staff. Respondents expressed three main priorities in the area of technology and library services: equitable access to technology, technology that is current, and technology resources that support the district's educational goals. The committee learned that on some of our campuses, the library is the only place students can access technology to complete assignments, conduct research, and type essays outside of class time. In our survey, 9% of students reported that the computer they use at home to complete schoolwork does not have access to the internet, and many also reported not having access to a printer at home. This means that for many of our students, library technology, along with the instruction and support provided by library staff, is essential for their academic success. And staff members sent a clear message that they want to continue to be able to use the library for whole-class instruction, especially with the increasing integration of educational software into their curricula. Concerns expressed by survey respondents and committee members included timely maintenance of faulty technology and a desire to have greater and more robust access to internet resources. At our February meeting, the committee had the opportunity to speak with Rick Roberts, the district's Executive Director of Information and Technology Services, who answered members' questions and shared with the committee some of the district's plans in these areas. We appreciate Mr. Roberts' time and expertise. And thanks to the voters of East County, here are just two examples of the kinds of current technology our students do have access to at Santana and Monavista High Schools. The committee learned that district library services has also been working with special education teachers to find ways to help provide students with access to assistive technologies at each of our campus libraries. Whether through access to video books, excuse me, audiobooks, specialized adaptive devices for computers, or appropriate online resources, the committee sees this as another way that district libraries can help serve all students. Campus libraries also further the district's educational goals with technology that supports online learning and post-secondary plan initiatives, as well as software that allows teachers and counselors to distribute instructional content directly to students' computer screens. District teacher librarians also provide extensive digital resources through the virtual library Learning Commons, including outstanding online academic databases, college and career resources, eBooks, and websites chosen to meet the specific needs of classroom teachers on each campus. Committee members were introduced to the idea of a library Learning Commons and highly support the continued development of this concept in the Grossmont District. Many colleges and universities have transformed their libraries into learning commons spaces rich in technology and designed for maximum flexibility of the physical space. This learning commons concept is taking shape in our district with the Proposition U remodeling of site libraries. The two schools who most recently opened newly remodeled libraries are Santana and Monavista, and at both schools, the design concepts incorporated many learning commons elements, including flexible spaces that allow for individual and whole-class learning. Spaces are configured to encourage collaboration among both staff and students. And to accommodate multiple use, future technologies, and educational needs that cannot really be envisioned at this time, in a learning commons, few items are bolted to the walls. Furniture and learning spaces are mobile to allow for the configuration of whatever learning environment is desired. In our survey, students told us they want extended library services before and after the school day, which along with providing students with 24-hour access to digital resources helps extend the reach of the commons. And finally, students and staff tell us that the library Learning Commons should be the heart of the school, a place where people gather for special events and a place that promotes pride in their school. As part of the library's mission to meet the needs of students, staff, and community, the committee also recommends the development of a three-year plan that articulates how those needs will be met. 50 years ago, we could not have predicted the incredible transformation from the drawers of library card catalogs to the modern internet. Similarly, the role of libraries and school librarians has and will continue to change in ways we cannot anticipate. Thus, the Library Services Committee recommends implementation of an annual reflection and reevaluation of library services in our district, so that the changing needs of school library programs, excuse me, school library patrons, and the rapid technological transformations we are sure to see continue to be reflected in the goals of our district's library services program. An annual review will also make sure that major initiatives, like the two recently launched by Library Council, are kept alive through regular reflection and reevaluation. Okay, we've told you a lot about the work of the Library Services Committee, but there's nothing like seeing our school libraries in action. We want to thank Granite Hills Video Production Teacher Carl Danielson for helping us put together this two-minute film that helps bring these words to life.
I go into the Granite Hills Library, and I notice that the librarian has different-colored hair, and I just love it, you know, she helps me with different resources and check out laptops, books, whatever I need, any resources that help me out with school.
I learn best when I'm in the library, like studying for essays or like a homework assignment, because it's quiet and like I actually have a place to study at.
I learn physics in the library, and that, not sounds odd, but I have a lot of physics to do, and I can get it done in the library where there are very few distractions, it's a nice environment to learn, and although the one distraction is a lot of great books surrounding me.
I'm interested in the Marine Corps, I plan on joining the Marine Corps, doing infantry after high school. I use, I come to the library most likely every day.
Collaboration is really important for me, working with a school librarian, because we use a lot of technology and do a lot of research projects.
We utilize the library and more in our extended essay process in order to get the kids to do much more quality academic research.
Those librarians are just there, they just help fuel my love for books.
Come in the library to look up different colleges, I think I might go there, Arizona State, they got a big library.
Thank you very much. Do you want me to stay? I don't know if there are any questions.
Steve, I, I want to thank you, I mean, you really have done a nice job with this group, it was a very, very good report, and it's been a pleasure getting to know you a little better and all of our librarians, and I think this has been a really good process, and I really appreciate the recommendations for future considerations, so I don't know if any board members have any questions or comments?
Steve, thank you, and the librarians that worked with you on this project, and the superintendent, and this board, really because this whole board was really concerned about the emphasis and the focus that we might have lost on our campuses, that is, or are, our libraries on our campuses. So I remember when I first got on the board, and Suzie might remember, we went to Still Canyon for, it was kind of a focus like this, is how you have the hubs and the learning commons and all those kind of things, and then the funding and all that, it gets to put to the back shelf, and what's important is like we're building all of these, and modernizing all of these classrooms and the new science rooms and our new libraries, and there's program and people and teachers, students, in each one of those rooms, and they're there for a reason, and they're, they're needed. So I just want to thank the superintendent for really taking that step at the direction of the board to really have a focus on how meaningful all of our librarians are to our students on all of our campuses and to the teachers there, so thank you for your effort in putting this together.
Thank you. Any more else? Okay, thanks.
We have our monthly report to the governing board by the chairperson of the Proposition HNU Citizens Bond Oversight Committee, Chairperson Nancy Hurst.
Hi, I actually have three reports for you tonight, so bear with me. Good evening, board members, superintendent, and cabinet. The CBOC appreciates the opportunity to provide you with the following report of its projects and activities. The retaining wall, the Child Development Center at the Grossmont campus was questioned again by some of the committee members, and it was agreed to task the CBOC's consultant, Colby Technologies, to look into the unforeseen circumstances of the decisions and the decisions made thereafter. The CBOC also tasked Colby Technologies to prepare a report on the Workforce Training Center that would describe the history of the project, including budgets, timelines, and both reports are expected to take approximately three months to complete. The CBOC understands the superintendent, has requested that the staff complete a bond program review, we heard a moment ago, which we rolled out to the CBOC. We are to review it, and it's really of some importance to us, so we're looking forward to receiving it. With regards to our subcommittee work, in reviewing the recent facilities control systems or fax report, the subcommittee took notice... or fax report, the subcommittee took notice of a number of adjustments due to change orders. This appears to have been the result of hesitation by some of the project managers to include change orders when cost was still somewhat unknown. In response, staff shared that it is in the process of developing a new report tool called the Total Indicated Cost or TIC report. This report would be, include a range of costs reflecting the best case and worst-case scenarios, with the belief that the forecast costs in the fax report would be in the mid-range of that TIC report. The subcommittee is looking forward to seeing the implementation of this new reporting tool and its impact on the fax report. The construction oversight and the steering and planning subcommittees had the opportunity to meet with the managers of the school facilities at their January meeting. The steering and planning subcommittee reviewed the staff's report on deferred maintenance plan sequence and a historic review of the projects. Is looking forward to Santana's run-through, which will be the first school undergoing the inspection process. Staff has also been updating the subcommittee on the prioritization of the remaining projects against the anticipated cash flow constraints. Communication Subcommittee has completed its annual report, which was approved by the CBOC at its last meeting. It also recommended to the CBOC that the printing of the report be doubled with an effort to get the report into the hands of the administration at the feeder schools. Next, we'll be working on its website and considering social media options. The audit and finance Subcommittee reviewed the final audit reports for FY11 for each of the bonds and made recommendations to the CBOC that accept the reports. Which leads me to the presentation of the 2011 annual reports. Independent audits were conducted on the Prop H and U financial statements by Christie White Accounting Corporation. These financial statements are essentially one-year summaries of the expenditures and receipts of each bond fund. The assets created by the bond expenditures and the liabilities related to the actual bonds are not reflected in these financial statements. Those assets and liabilities are reflected on the district's balance sheet. The auditor issued unqualified reports for the financial statements for both funds. An unqualified audit opinion is of the highest level of report and results that an auditor can provide. The auditor also issued reports on internal controls or financial reporting and compliance. Such reports do not opine on the overall effectiveness of internal controls or compliance. The report did note that no material weaknesses and no incidences of noncompliance with laws or regulations were noted during the course of the audit and transactions tested. Lastly, the auditor also conducted a performance audit for both Prop H and U. These audits consist of tests to determine if the bond funds were used for the appropriate purposes as set forth in the actual ballot. As part of the performance audit, among other tests, the auditor tested 71% of the Prop H expenditures and 45% of the Prop U expenditures for validity, allowability, and accuracy. The overall audit report on performance was unqualified with no exceptions noted. And now for my annual report.
I have a quick question before you go to your annual report. On the audit report for the compliance, so on Prop H, we were 71% in compliant?
No, no, they checked 74% of the expenditures.
Oh, it's a test?
Yes.
Okay.
That's how, the percentage is checked.
Did 71% test of that and 45 on the Prop U or something like that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on the audit? Okay. Okay, so lastly, on behalf of the CBOC, I'd like to present its 2011 annual audit. Please keep in mind that this report highlights activities, financial data, and other information that occurred during 2011 only. So while we know that some of this information has changed, we want the report to present a clear picture of the status of the bond work as of December 2011. By way of background, the CBOC is a requirement under the Prop H and Prop 39. The committee is comprised of 11 citizen volunteers representing various organizations. Everything from the PTA, PTO, business and senior citizen organizations, community members at large, parents, architectural organizations, taxpayers' associations, and financial executives. We review the financial plans and status reports of bond expenditures. We visit construction sites to see how bond monies are being spent. We visit community groups and provide reports. In the past, we have done a number of feeder districts as well as legal women voters and the Chamber of Commerce. This list is simply going to provide you a summary of what we're going to talk about tonight. We will discuss the financial status, project status, audits, and the maintenance plan. This slide reflects the level of funding expenditures planned or received or spent. In 2011, the projects for Prop H and U were consolidated, so this slide looks a little bit different than last year's. As the case was last year, the district has not received all the money from the state that it was originally expecting and has spent less than half of what it has received. In May, $40 million in Prop U bonds were issued, bringing the total Prop U funds received to 180 million, which is consistent with the currently planned 10-year timeframe. However, in order to ensure that the tax rates remain within the limits approved by the voters, the payoff for these bonds will be made over a longer period of time and, as a result, will cost taxpayers substantially more. In the area of savings, in October of 2011, the district accomplished a refunding of 20 million outstanding Prop H bonds, thereby reducing overall borrowing costs to the taxpayers. They also included a part of the bonds in the federally financed Qualified School Construction Bonds, which resulted in approximate net interest of 1%, providing a savings to taxpayers of approximately $1.3 million. Also in 2011, the CBOC reviewed the district's conversion of the reporting systems used to track Prop H and U budgets, commitments, forecasting, and expenditures. This reporting tool is now a module within the district's financial system rather than a standalone report provided by the consultants. A quick recap of the projects during the year reflect that $62 million was spent on 19 projects with construction or design work occurring at virtually every campus. In addition, four special education suites were completed, which allowed students to return to their home schools and thereby reduce transportation costs. At the 12th High School, land acquisition was still underway. There were six parcels of land, four of which the district owned, and two parcels were involved in an eminent domain action. During the year, design and site demo work, including the removal of hazardous waste from pesticides used for personal use, had been underway. However, construction beyond site work was placed in hold pending restoration of funding levels back to Mount Seen in 2008. The following five slides represent construction work in progress, completed during the year or in design. And I won't go through and read these, but as you can see, virtually every location benefited from bond work and major work was completed at four campuses. During the year, the 2010 audits were presented to the CBOC. The audits were done by an independent auditing firm and in accordance with the government accounting, excuse me, auditing standards issued by the Controller General of the United States. The audits are performed to obtain reasonable assurances about whether the financial statements are free of material misstatements. In addition, performance audits were prepared in accordance with generally accepted government auditing standards and the objective of this audit is to determine within reasonable reason, excuse me, reasonable assurances that the proceeds of the sale of the bonds were used for only the purposes set forth in the ballot and not for any other purpose such as teacher and administrative salaries or other operating expenditures. The auditors found that district's financials presented fairly the financial position for Prop H and U funds. The performance audits also verify that funds were used for the work called for in the bond language and for no other purpose. These reports found no issues of noncompliance. Proposition H included language that promised to develop a maintenance plan to eliminate the backlog of deferred maintenance and to ensure that maintenance of new and renovated facilities did not become deferred again. An independent cost estimate commissioned by the district in 2010 projected that, after all Prop H and U work was completed, there'd be another 58 million deferred maintenance work needed over the next 10 years, with 19.6 million needed immediately and 4.3 million needed every year thereafter for nine years. The district's maintenance plan addresses approximately 34 million of the work identified in the 2010 estimate by focusing only on essential maintenance needs. The CBOC did its own study that included a hands-on walkthrough of facilities in the most needed areas of work. The CBOC study estimated that the backlog of essential maintenance needs was about 13 million. And that there was about 2.6 million of essential needs for each year in addition to the backlog. The district's maintenance plan calls for about 2 million a year starting in 2014. Due to the current funding levels and the state's waiver of minimum funding levels through 2014, the current funding is approximately $500,000. The CBOC reported to the board in September that the available funding was inadequate, either to eliminate the backlog or to keep the backlog from increasing. The CBOC recommended that any savings in bond funds from unused budgeted escalation costs be used to reduce these shortfalls and that any such savings be applied as soon as those savings were recognized. This board accepted those recommendations. Currently, 600,000 in bond savings has been identified to address the 13 million in essential backlog. The promise made in Prop H in 2004 to eliminate the backlog of deferred maintenance has not been met and may not be met in the near future. The CBOC cautions the board and the public that prioritization of essential maintenance must not become a mechanism for continual deferral of maintenance. Use of bond project savings, optimization of major repair work, restoration of normal funding levels for maintenance, and active inspections are all necessary elements for keeping the district's schools safe and functional. The CBOC is specifically tasked with review of the deferred maintenance program and it will review the current backlog annually. I would like to remind everyone that the CBOC meetings are always open to the public and typically occur on the last Wednesday of the month at 5:00 and are usually held at the library at the Grossmont High School. The website is cboc, and no presentations perfect until you find the mistake, guhsd.net. And I'd like to give a public thank you to our members that completed their important service in 2011. Ilana Levens-Craig, Fred Lear, Jim Penkin, Sharon Smith, and Mandy Brandt. Each of them was wonderfully involved with the CBOC in fulfilling its mission. This completes our three reports. Any questions? Thank you.
Okay, I believe it's time for our report regarding, oh, go ahead.
On the CBO's report, that goes live after it's reported to the board or is this final? Is this a draft?
Yes, this was the final act of the preparation of the report was to the board and it'll now be made public through all the venues.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, our report to the governing board regarding Proposition H and U status by program coordinator Katie Wright.
Good evening, members of the board, superintendent. My report for this evening, just below, you can't see on the screen, but our burn rate about $7 million a month. We were down a little bit last month due to the holidays, but we're still maintaining that, that burn rate, 7-8 million dollars a month. We're completing the Child Development Center at Grossmont High School. That will be, they're moving in now doing the final punch list work. The Humanities Building here at Grossmont as well, well underway, large pores here. Project's going really well. We finished up a culinary facility at Helix, it was in the 4500 Building. And as you know, the dedication of the Performing Arts Center last week. Got very good media coverage on that event, which was nice. Catherine Martin did a great job on that. El Cajon 4500, excuse me, 400-700, just modernization, just going very, very, very well. Good team out there, no complaints. 900, 1100, 1200 at El Cap, finishing that up finally. It's been a good effort there. The El Cap Ag Program has the 1600 modernization and a new three-classroom building underway. Again, all going very well, good teams out there. The Granite Science CTE 21 Classroom Building likewise going very well. No rain problems, that's starting to close up now. Finishing up Montavista as well, the 200 Library Guidance 600 Building, coming in here in the spring, we'll get that going. The pools, we'll have the dedication of those in the next several weeks, I think into April, actually. Want to let you know the District Office Project got out of DSA. We're in the bidding process right now. Lee's Leaseback, you approved, I believe, last year. About a 16-month construction period, the funding source is noted below. Some Prop H money for access compliance, some Prop U money for the special ed relocation, like $3 million and the bulk of it is redevelopment dollars. Finally, just some work, some, you know, effort in design and as listed here, you see this each month, no big changes here. We're working with Army Corps on the new high school for the permit there. That's a painful process, painfully slow. And the solar project is on hold, I think we mentioned that last month though. That concludes my report.
Solar project is on hold.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay, report to the governing board regarding Students Attendance Incentive Program, the final results for 2010-11. Scott Patterson.
Yes, sir, this is the fifth year of this program's existence and I'm happy to report that it has produced a positive result in four of the five years it's been in existence, including last year, which generated a 0.13% increase in attendance. Doesn't sound like much, but it generated another $139,000 in revenue for us, 50% of which goes to the sites that participated in that increase, being El Cajon Valley, Mount Miguel, Granite Hills, Valhalla, West Hills, and Chaparral. So I think it's very fair to say that the program is working and it was wise of this board to put that program in place. It's becoming a little bit, as you raise the bar each year, it's harder and harder to jump over that bar, but over the last five years, this has returned $300,000 of rewards back to the sites, which means overall, we've generated $600,000 in improved attendance.
Yeah, thank you. Report to the governing board regarding District Legal Costs. Scott.
Yes, the prior report was good news. This isn't so much good news. We are experiencing a significantly increased legal cost burden. The second quarter this year represented expenditures of $239,000, significantly above last quarter, or last year's second quarter at 130,000. About 60% of that increase is driven though by bond program legal costs, which we expect in terms of real estate matters and having to do with the purchase of the land. Unfortunately, the other 40% of the increase is due to issues that we must deal with, employee matters and public records requests and the like. But we are not trending well in this area, but that's where we are.
Scott, on the public records requests, I know when somebody asks for them, we charge them for duplicating and so on, is that correct?
We have the legal right to do that in practice. We don't end up doing that a lot. It's kind of a nominal amount. That law is in place to discourage what I'll call frivolous pursuits, but we haven't been exercising that right lately in the Public Records Act request that we've gotten as kind of a gesture of goodwill, I guess.
Okay. But we can't, and I think I understand why, but we don't charge legal fees for us to determine what we should and should not give them, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, on to action items. Action items, election of candidates for the California School Boards Association, Region 17 Delegate Assembly for 2012. Board members, please review the delegate vacancies and nominate our delegates. You should have a pink sheet, looks like this. Yes, we, pardon? It's my understanding that we collectively nominate nine candidates and collectively vote to create one vote for our district. Okay? So we have, what do we have here, six, seven, eight? 11 candidates, of which we can vote for up to nine. So do any board members have any?
Well, since I'm a delegate to the SDA Assembly. You know, we have such a good team working together, so I always encourage the incumbents. Some of them are new and some of them are veterans, so it makes for a really nice blend. So my nominations for the board's consideration would be Katie Dexter, Lemon Grove. If you go down the left side of the column, the second, third, fourth, fifth, and sixth. Then the first one on the right, and the last two at the bottom. Richard C. Smith, I think you're familiar with him. He's from the county of San Diego and headed up the ROP program for years at San Diego County Board of Education. And he's now a board member of a bondsel, so he just came on as an appointment, so I recommend him to be nominated. So I think that's eight. I'm a little torn between the two Ramona people. She's a great gal, but I love Dan, who's an incumbent. She's perfect, she's Don Perfect. So I'm not quite sure where that's coming into play, but you know, I could say another guy from San Marcos to put another guy in this mix, but I just came up with the, what do I have, seven?
Eight.
I had eight, yeah, I had eight and then if you guys want to throw one out there, Comichelle's great, I just was kind of looking at seven.
Okay, do any other, any other board members have any suggestions for candidates? Okay, well, the advantage of voting for eight over nine is that you don't dilute your vote. So... So I will make a motion, then, to nominate—and I'll just go by last names—Dexter, Greer, Groth, Lilly, Lopez, is it Marquez Maiden?
Madden.
Madden. Renshaw, and Smith—to serve as delegates.
Second.
Any further discussion? Please vote.
Aye.
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 Aye? Let's see. Business Services: approval of fiscal year 2011-2012, second interim certification of fiscal solvency, in compliance with Education Code Section 42130 and 42131. Could I have a motion and second to discuss? I'll second it. Scott Patterson.
Thank you. I'm here to provide a brief overview of the second interim financial report and a little bit of our overall budget planning. That'll involve an update on the governor's budget proposals, the second interim summary, a look at our district reserves, our planning strategy, and our conclusion—unfortunately, we are still recommending in a qualified status. The governor's proposals have been morphing a little bit. The transportation funding was originally—in his January proposal—proposed to be cut in the baseline. Now it's included. In other words, they've put—they've restored the cut. They've done that by reducing the deferral buy-downs. The problem with that is it now positions the Trigger Two cut to be larger if the taxes don't pass, so it raises the stakes on that tax initiative. The initial estimate was $370 per cut for ADA. If the Trigger Two cut were put in place, this would raise the stakes by another $85, so we're looking at a $455 per ADA cut, which means 8.1 million to Grossmont. You'll see that number in a moment. Lot of discussion on what's known as the weighted student formula. It's a forefront of discussion. This is the one where you take all the dollars and allocate them out on a per ADA basis with given weights. A base grant of approximately $4920 per ADA. You get 37% of that number for every English-language learner and free and reduced lunch student. If you're a district with over 50% English language and free and reduced lunch, you can get what's known as a concentration grant, and you can get additional dollars for meeting accountability metrics, which are not entirely clear yet. This is proposed to be phased in 5%, then jumped to 15, 40, 60, 80. By '17, '18, it's proposed to be fully implemented. All districts are to be held harmless in 2012, '13, but no promises after that.
What does that mean?
Yeah, hold harmless for what?
A reduction in funding, if, in fact, the taxes pass. It assumes growth in state revenues, and it assures all districts will see some growth in the funding above where they are today by the year 2017, '18. So again, this—yes, sir?
What's phased in over six years? What does that mean?
Is that from the previous slide? All those things that would be phased in?
Right. So this—5% of the funding coming to a district would be based on this formula, and no district in 2012, '13 would receive less per ADA than they did in 11, '12.
Okay, now I get it. But then, if you go back, our base grant—no. Yeah, our base grant today is right around $6,000, right?
Right.
So that would drop to 4,900, and then when it's these pluses, are they—would they add to the 4,900?
They would. And if that didn't get us all the way back to the $6,000, including all the categorical dollars that they put in the pot, they would have to supplement that to keep the Hold Harmless in place. But you've identified an issue that is going to show up on the next slide, which is, that per ADA amount does not recognize the current differentiation in funding by level. So there's a fundamental issue for us as a high school district, because we are currently funded at a higher level than a unified in an elementary district, because the cost of education, as widely recognized, is more expensive at the high school level. So we have an issue with this.
Well, nobody else told the governor about this?
A lot of people have told the governor about this.
Doesn't make sense.
Well, here's another one. The average growth in funding—that—keep in mind, he's presenting this to be a good thing. And to do that, everybody gets to increase their funding. And we get to increase by $729 per ADA, in this world where taxes pass and in this world where revenues grow. The problem is, if we were just average, we would have grown by 2750. So by definition, we would be a loser, even though it looks nice that we're increasing. You follow all that?
And this is the best possible scenario.
This is the scenario that he's packaged at that base amount of 4,920, but we start at a disadvantage, because that's lower than our current average dollars per ADA. So there's a Hold Harmless provision in '12, '13 for one year, assuming taxes pass. And then, again, no promises after that. So I think it's safe to say, based on this discussion, that we're not entirely satisfied with this proposal at this point in time.
Okay, so this puts us all on the even keel.
Everybody starts at 4,920 per ADA in this plan.
What happens to basic aid districts? I mean, I know that doesn't affect us.
They would continue to generate a higher amount, because their amount is currently higher than the state-funded amount.
Okay, so they would—
They would stay basic aid.
Were they? Okay.
Yeah. This has got a long way to go. As you can tell, there's a lot of fundamental issues here, and, you know, half the state's not happy with it. The other half, hey, if I get more money, I'm good.
And this is going to impact our charter schools as well?
Yes.
Well, yeah, they're high schools. They get the high school funding.
Right.
Everybody in the boat, basic aid would stay basic aid.
They're all the same. Well, that's—we're getting similar ones right now.
Moving on to the second interim summary. You've seen this before, so this is just a rehash. The trigger cut of '64 happened—Trigger One, remember—happened in December. We have a full school year, and you've seen the rest of this. '12, '13 is what we're really focused on at this point, obviously a cola of zero. Our enrollment decline, built into the numbers that you see, is 534. We are thinking those numbers are going to be bigger than that, and that needs to be updated. The transportation funding cut is removed in the baseline, but it's put back into Trigger Two. Health and welfare is predicated at 11.3, special education at 2%. Here's a summary, assuming the taxes fail, of the three years that's included in our second interim. We see revenues of 160, cost of 179, which presents our $19 million problem that we're dealing with. This problem in this fiscal year, we're going to address with reserves, because that occurred primarily in Trigger One, in addition to the basic deficit, and then that deficit grows in the out-years. This is just the visual, which is pretty ugly. Revenue is green, cost is red. Prior to solutions and assuming taxes fail, we have to remember what our baselines are here.
Go back two slides. Okay, right there. We cure a $19 million problem. Does that mean we have $2.8 million problem the next year, or does it mean we start over and have another $21 million problem?
Good question. The $19 million problem, to the extent it is dealt with by budget cuts that continue, would work to reduce that number. The $19 million problem that we solve with reserves would reemerge the next year. So if we just say, for instance, half and half, half reserves, half cuts, that would take that down to about a $10, $11 million problem if that—if those cuts were to continue. Here's the update we looked at. We did see an increase in our forecasted revenue—or, excuse me, a reduction of our forecasted expenditures, which created a positive impact on our forecast. We're looking at the non-personnel accounts, and as the superintendent reported, our austerity measures, if you will, have yielded some results, and we were able to see a reduction in our non-personal accounts, about $1 million a year. That extends into next year, too. So our second interim deficit projection for this fiscal year is the 7.4. We saw that on the slide a minute ago. '12, '13's a little more complicated, because, again, it comes in two pieces. At the January 26 workshop, we were looking at a baseline deficit of 13 and 1/2, plus a trigger amount of 6 and 1/2 for a $20 million total deficit. Then, we got—the changes of the transportation got put back in. Good news. Problem is, it got taken back out in Trigger Two. So there is just the shift from the baseline to Trigger Two, so it puts you right back where you started. We've updated our forecast by the million dollars. That's leading to a $19 million total projected deficit, assuming taxes fail. 10.9 baseline if taxes fail, another 8.1, that's our $19 million total.
I have a question, quick. And I know you've explained this before, on the transportation cut. We had our transportation cut. Okay, so then we had so much restored, right?
Yes.
Or the calculation didn't do us any good, so we—
Right.
But we had some money restored.
In the baseline.
But we lost on the new calculation side.
Right, but remember, it actually—this happened twice. The governor initially, in Trigger One, proposed to cut half of our transportation funding.
Oh, that's right.
A bill went through and turned it to a per ADA. We didn't end up any better, and that may be what you're thinking about. Here is a redo. I mean, again, he's backing off the transportation cut, but he's saying, if taxes don't pass, that's where the cut happens, on a per ADA basis. So once again, he's converting it to a per ADA basis, but in this case, it's contingent on taxes passing. We're living in the world of contingent budget planning. I mean, last year, it was, do the revenues come in at a certain level? This year is, do the taxes pass? So we—so far, we're up to Trigger Two now. We had Trigger One, now we're at Trigger Two, and yet to be seen. Here's our district reserves update, a slight improvement. Again, going back to the actual of June 30, we had 15.9. We allocated 7.3 prior to Trigger One for just this year, 11, '12. Trigger One took out another million, so at the January workshop, we were looking at an available amount to dedicate to solving the '12, '13 problem of 7.6 million. However, we do believe that we're going to generate another $900,000 through the process of this year. That's the reduction in expenditure we're forecasting, which equals a remaining amount that we can use above the 4.5% baseline of $8.5 million. You'll see that number here and again, as our district budget planning strategy. We're developing our plan based on taxes rejected virtually—I think, literally, all districts in California are doing that. We're going to use our remaining reserves to mitigate significant budget cuts, and those cuts are significant. We're going to increase our flexibility fund transfers where possible. These are our categorical dollars being used to support the general fund. Unfortunately, we're looking at significant budget reductions in the central office, targeted programs, special education, and we're at table talking to our bargaining partners. Those reserves and compensation work year reductions are necessary to account for taxes failing in the event they do. We have to have that solution strategy put in place. So, what are the numbers? In '12, '13, this is the 19 million. We looked at the 21.8 in the out-year. Solutions, we're going to use 8.5 million against that. We're going to transfer another $800,000 from adult ed, ROP, and some smaller categorical programs. And the budget reductions that are necessary are 9.5, 9.7 million this year. And just doing the math, if that were to retain—and Mr. Hoy, this was your question—if that continues, it works to help lower that number, but we've still got a big, significant issue there. Again, all based upon taxes not passing.
Taxes pass. What are those numbers?
Taxes pass? The number is the 10.9.
This year?
Yes.
And next year?
It would be 8.1 better than the 21.8, so 13 million and change.
Even if taxes pass?
Yes.
Yeah, it's not that much. There's usually—
No, there is. Yeah, I know.
So, where that takes us, our potential budget reduction actions. And by the way, the FTE that you see here, this is a subset of the numbers that you'll be seeing later tonight with regard to the layoff resolutions, and these include both certificated and classified positions. These numbers are lower than what you're going to see later, because this is just to solve the general fund deficit. There are other issues out there which are driving reductions: loss of categoricals, loss of grants, and that kind of thing. So central office reductions, we're looking at 16 FTE and a $2 million reduction. Targeted program reductions, 17 FTE, we're stretching to try to get to the 2.2, may not get all the way there. Special ed, a big part of this is going to be a reduction in our non-public school placements, which appears to be successful, and we are still at table on the employee issues. So the conclusion is, the second interim—I've said it about 10 times—we're assuming the taxes fail. Reserves can be used to offset all of the 11, '12 deficit, but only a partial on the '12, '13, and beyond that, we can't do it solely on budget cuts. So we recommend a qualified certification, which is going to require us to do a third interim. County office oversight, according—and they're following ED code. When a district follows and files a negative, a qualified certification, it must do a third interim, which is just another snapshot later in the year. So we'll be bringing that back to you in the May or June timeframe. With that, we ask for your approval of the second interim on a qualified basis.
I guess, submoved?
Second. Comments? Oh, we did already have a motion, second? Sorry. Comments?
Well, I think I mentioned this last year, but I think it's continuing. What we've done is we've put the frog in the pot, and we're slowly turning up the heat. And I'm afraid we're witnessing the destruction of public education in this state, which I find offensive. What bothers me the most is I am—I feel powerless, because we don't determine what money we have. They just send it and tell us, you make do. Now, it would be one thing if we were a business that didn't have business. In other words, if we were making widgets, and we didn't—you know, nobody's buying them, and then I could understand that. But somebody up there seriously thinks that we're going to continue to be able to do what we're doing now and do a quality job, because we're expecting the teachers to do that, and we're going to be testing these kids, and we expect, even if we have fewer days with the students, that we'll get just as much education in. It reminds me of Jamie Volmer talking about how we've done—added all this stuff, and then said, you don't get any more time to do it. Well, not only that, we're going to get less time. No money, no time. So, to say the least, I'm frustrated, and I wish that I was smart enough to have an idea of how to make people understand. As I mentioned to my colleagues before this evening, received a mail from an individual who said that part of problems we have is that we're unwilling to make the tough decisions, and we've—we're wasting the money. Mismanagement. And I—you know, I would love to have that individual come and show us how we're mismanaging it and how we're wasting it, but I know I'm rambling, but frankly, I'm—I don't know what else to do. I don't know what we can do to solve this, because I don't see it getting better next year, even if the taxes pass.
I have a question. I know we're not there yet. Just to touch on a public comment. The handing out of pink slips, and then the rescinding of those. What was—the history of why we—why would we do that, and then— What was the history of, why would we do that, and then why we would take them back? And is it, what was it predicated on? I know I'm putting everyone in the spot, but I think it's worth the question and find out, because this is very emotional for us, but more importantly, it's emotional for our teachers and our classified staff. So, just trying, because I don't like doing that, and you see it in the papers all the time. Oh, they did all these layoff notices, yeah, because it's by law, and then you rescind them back. So it's like, would you go outside and find some money on a tree? So I'm just trying to publicly have that conversation so it makes sense to me.
I think that you and Fran and Dick hit pieces of the problem, which is that the structure of the system produces a decision before we know the answer. We don't know the answer to the budget. We know what the worst-case scenario is to the budget, and we also have a requirement that says on March 15th, we must notice people. So we are required to do this by the structure of the system, which seems to be, as you pointed out, backwards. You should make decisions after you know what your budget is, and then make tough decisions about whether or not you need to lay people off, which is the worst thing you can do in an organization. And you're right. So, the recension is definitely based on, then, what ends up happening to be changing conditions as we get into the May revise, which always seems to change the governor's budget, and then when the budget actually comes in.
So it's the May revise that has changed that course to allow for us to rescind those pink slips?
Right. If you look back to what happened last year...
I just want to have this picture here. They forced our hand for March 15th.
Yeah.
And then we get a May revise where we have to take it back.
Right.
Something's seriously wrong with that.
Well, it's crazy. Last year, if you remember what happened, we were predicting, what, Scott, close to a $400 decrease in the ADA. And everybody in the state who are experts in watching this believed that to be the case. Remember, we were all gearing up for that big drop. And, you know, AXA, CSBA, CTA, CSCA, all of the key people believe that. We were all prepared for that, and to our great surprise, the governor came out with quote-unquote "a flat budget." I mean, remember, that's what happened. And so, as a result, you know, we then could go back to the layoffs and pull them back. It is true that we do have attrition.
But we stayed pat last year. We didn't issue any, so the end of the year...
We issued them last year.
Oh, I can't remember.
Three years ago.
Oh, I thought it was last year.
But what I'm saying is, those are the kinds of things that happen that are structural that cause this. Now, the other kind of recension that happens is, attrition typically happens after March, not before. And so, we do very, very careful analysis, and if you look at the precision with which we try to drill down on the layoffs, we do everything we can already to limit the scope of those layoffs. And then, as soon as we get a resignation, we literally, if we can, and we've got a good plan together, we actually literally pull one at a time. Now, it's crazy, it's heart-wrenching, but frankly, I don't know what else to do to be more humane. So, anyway, I guess I'm rambling now, so...
No, I know, and I didn't want to pee on the spot. It's just, it is, it's a valid issue, and our state's not addressing it.
And it's an awful situation for the board to be placed in. It's an awful situation for our employees to be placed in, and there's no spin on that.
I know this got away from this, so I guess we'll vote on this, but I wanted to lead into, because that's part of our budget discussion, is it not?
Okay, my understanding is there's a motion on the floor to have, accept a qualified, what is it?
Second.
Second, yes. Any further questions or comments on the motion on the floor? Please vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. Approval of monthly budget overview for the period ending January 31st, 2012. Could I have a motion and second?
So moved.
Second. Discussion, or I'm sorry, Scott. Or is there...
This is the standard monthly report that's consistent with the financial report you just received.
I want to note that some of our utilities are going up despite the fact that what the, that we don't get any more money. And they, now, am I right that SGG&E won't let us cut back what we pay them?
Yeah, they don't seem to adjust their rates based upon state funding.
Okay, just checking.
They don't do residential wise either. That's not good.
Okay, please vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. Approval of change orders awarded to lowest responsive bidders in excess of 10% cumulative or $100,000 per change order. Could I have a motion and second?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Please vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. Ratification of change orders approved pursuant to Resolution 2011-76.
So moved.
Discussion. Please vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. Public hearing on Resolution 2012-34 to grant an easement to the Helix Water District in, upon, over, and across a portion of the Helix Charter High School site. I declare the hearing open. If there are any speakers, please come to the podium. Seeing none, I declare the hearing closed. Adoption of Resolution 2012-34 to dedicate an easement to the Helix Water District upon the Helix Charter High School site. Could I have a motion and second to discuss and approve?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Please vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. Ratification and approval of settlement agreement for the purchase of KNS Property LLC parcels for the new high school, and authorization for the superintendent or designee to execute the same.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. A quick question. It is my understanding that with the approval of this agreement, we have completed our purchase of all properties relevant to the 12th High School. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, any further discussion? Please vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. Educational services, adoption of Resolution 2012-36, transition partnership project, TPP, authorizing change of signature to be superintendent or designee, assistant superintendent of educational services, to execute same. Could I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Please vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. Item two has been deleted. Item D, human resources, number one, consideration of adoption of Resolution 2012-43 to adopt criteria for resolving ties in seniority related to certificated layoffs. Could I have a motion and second?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
I think this is pretty much standard, what we had last time, she was right.
It is.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any further discussion or questions? Please vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. Item two, consideration of adoption of Resolution 2012-44 to reduce particular kinds of certificated employees as listed in the resolution. Direction to notify affected employees of recommendation of layoff and related actions. A quick comment. Due to the approval of the settlement agreement with Steel Canyon Charter High School, I am pleased to amend this item to remove the five special education LH-SAI teachers and the one special education psychologist from the list, thereby lowering the total certificated employees to 84.233 full-time equivalents. Could I have a motion and second?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Please vote.
Whoa, 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 I thought, well, I thought two. I thought...
Were you waiting for me?
No.
I was, but that's okay.
First of all, there is absolutely, I mean, we can sit up here and say, well, you know, this is hard, and it is hard, but it's not half as hard as it is to get the pink slip. I get that. If voting no on this would change things, I'd do it. But it's not going to change things, because we don't know how much money we're going to get. We don't know how many students are going to show up. We got a, just, it's not a good thing. This is not a good vote. It's the wrong vote. But it's the vote I believe we have to make. And you can rest assured that I will be pounding on the administration, although I think I don't have to do that, to do whatever we can to restore these positions as quickly as we can. And, you know, it's not a good situation, and I feel for those teachers who have to go through this, some of them two and three times, and some outstanding teachers. So, at least that's where I am on this.
Yeah, and I just want to add that, you know, some of this is relative to grant funding, you know, and when the shelf life goes away, and we have, you know, no money in the general fund, and they're good programs, they're important programs for our students for many reasons, and so there's quite a few in here that are related to grants no longer being funded, and then we have no funds to support that any longer. And it's one of the reasons I hate grants, because there's no guarantee, and people work so hard in those areas to get those programs off the ground. And I can't believe it's just, it's amazing program for me, I'm just struggling with that, and I just, you know, it's that upchecking and vomiting kind of thing. And that's just one. That's just one thing. So, I am very hopeful for your trip to Sacramento tomorrow. So I'll stop asking a lot of questions, so you can get home and get up there, because that's, what, 13.3?
We need to mention what we're doing to try to solve at least those 13.
Yes, some of these names.
We have a team of people going to the State Board of Education meeting in Sacramento tomorrow to appeal the denial of our continued funding for our Kia grant at El Cajon Valley High School campus. It's $2.5 million, it's over 13 positions, and we have, I think, a good chance to make a very strong case for the needs of our district, for our community, the community of El Cajon, and of course, for El Cajon Valley High School. And it is, what we think the story we will tell will be the story of a group of teachers and staff people who have done incredible things in a challenging situation, and the loss of that funding would be devastating, not just to the staff people that would be directly impacted, but to the kids on that campus and their families in our community. So, we are going to make our very best effort tomorrow and hope to come back with some good news.
I wasn't going to say anything, because I figure what is, is, the more you talk about it, the madder, and the more frustrated you get, the more you frustrate everybody else, the more time you waste, it just, but I got to say something. For those members of the public, and even staff people who've been in education for years and decades, I think you have to be on this side of the dais to really appreciate our situation. First of all, we've been deficit spending year after year, millions of dollars of reserves. I think within about, depending on whether this initiative passes, we could be down to our minimum reserves, 4.5%, which is the board's set minimum reserve. I think, what are we, about a year away from that? And then even if we'd go down to the state minimum allowed by law, 3%, I think we'd maybe have maybe one more year, or six months or something after that, and then we'd be out. So, we have spent millions and millions of dollars' reserves. We're spending down, we're almost at the very end. And we are frustrated because of the fact that our system is run by politicians. These rules are, and our ed code is, all set 100% by politicians. And we get to, we are trapped, in closed session, we often talk, I'm not getting into any specifics, don't worry, but we'll just, we just beat our heads against the insanity of so many things the way they are, for which we have no control, that we just have to go with the hand we've been dealt. And here we are again, with the hand we've been dealt. And I know that it must, those of you out there must think, why don't they do this? Why don't they do that? We used to think that before we ran for office and got elected, and then all of a sudden, like Dick, I'm sure this has been a tremendous education for you. Well, you can hear his heartfelt comments. Those are sincere. Dick's not saying that for any other reason than he feels impotent, and just, I don't know, maybe just overwhelmed by the situation where you get to be on the school board and destroy what you ran to help. But I, that's my frustration, and it's worth, it's, I guess I had to vent.
You know, this district has been responsible, it's been frugal, and yet, look at where we are now. To be let go in this environment where there are no other jobs to go to, it's heart-wrenching, and it's frustrating when you realize that Sacramento is playing with our teachers and our students, using them for political purposes, and there's nothing we can do to stop that. And like everyone else here, I hope and pray that we're able to rescind each of these notices, but to get these notices repeatedly, what that does to a person's self-esteem, their sense of security, their sense of belonging, I mean, it brings you right to the bottom of Maslow's hierarchy of needs. But that's where we're finding ourselves, and it's anger and frustration, and we don't know how to direct it or where to direct it to.
I have just one quick question. Just go back to the budget. With Prop 98, it looks like there's no consideration for that mechanism anymore in this. I'm missing where the conversation is about funding that and the maintenance factor...
Are you referring to the weighted student formula?
Yeah.
It's just a different way of delivering the same number of dollars distributed differently based upon a new formula. So Prop 98 determines the minimum amount of funding that the state is required to deliver to K-14 education.
Overall, right.
But the governor's proposing is to reshape that. And quite frankly, I'm supportive of the increased flexibility idea behind it, and I think we probably all are. I just don't like the result of the way it's come out with regard to, starting from the standpoint that you equalize all levels and give them all the same amount per ADA. But they're still meeting, to the extent they were meeting the Prop 98 guarantee, they're meeting it under this, and assuming more dollars are going to be there to fund that growth we talked about.
So does that take away the idea of equalization, in a sense? Or is that still...
Yeah, equalization...
You know, there's so much to that, I'm just trying to get my head around it. If Prop 98 ensures that so much money will go through to K-14...
Right.
Right? This is just under Prop 98 as a new mechanism?
Delivery method, yeah.
Okay.
New allocation method.
Okay. Which, well, they didn't, they don't fund 98.
So, we just changed the formula, we don't increase the money.
Oh, no. Oh, no. Well, because it's under...
It's a redistribution of the same amount of money, assuming that more money's coming into the system through taxes and revenue growths.
Right. Okay, I just trying to equate that. Thank you.
Please vote.
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Aye.
Aye.
I had to do the symbolic no, sorry.
Moving on to the consolidated agenda, we have one motion to approve items A through C. The consolidated motion expides board action on all agenda items which are not held for discussion. Items not held will be approved as written as part of the consolidated agenda. Items that are held are excluded from the consolidated agenda. Items that are held are excluded from the consolidated agenda and will be acted upon individually. Do any board members have any items to be pulled? Could I have a motion to approve the consolidated agenda as written?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Please vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. Moving on to board member reports. Mr. Kelly.
Nothing to report.
Okay. Dr. Woods?
Just appreciated our principals and what they're doing and leading our, our students and their faculties in a very difficult time, and yet, we're still making increases. But it's not going to last. When we keep these type of cuts, it does undermine the entire process. We're just going on momentum of what we've been doing, and at this point, the momentum is going to come to an end.
Member Schreiber?
Thank you. Just a couple of things. Went to laurels for leaders with the superintendent. We represented Grossman along with some of our principals and, of course, our ASB leadership, and that's always a really good luncheon. We missed you, Dick. And Dr. Woods, you've been there before. So that's, that was very good. Obviously, the, the digging of the dirt over at Helix Charter for the Performing Arts. And just say, I'm, I'm really looking forward to the comprehensive report, and I really appreciate you doing that. And I, I know Dick and I, we sit in on the bond subcommittee meetings, and I think it's really a more forensic way for the board to, to really look at some, some of the things that we see as the tip of the iceberg, but we can really have a board conversation about that. And so I, I just really appreciate that, and I look forward to that report. Thank you.
Member Hoy. Are there any items for future board meetings? Yes, Mr. Kelly.
I, I guess this would be where we'd go. We have a board meeting scheduled for May 10th. And it turns out that my company, not me.
You're going to Hawaii again.
No. No. It's been a long time since I've been there. But I will be out of state, and I will not be available by phone at the time of the meeting. And I would like to ask if the board wouldn't mind rescheduling the meeting, the May 10th meeting, to either maybe the week before or the week after. You don't have to answer right now. You can all check your schedules or so forth, but Debbie, could you?
There's actually a conflict with the, because of the hearing officer's decision.
The hearing officer's decision.
Before the layoffs, we could delay. And so we can't take it, we can't have a meeting after because that would be after the 15th of May.
Could we do it the week before?
The week before, we wouldn't have the hearing officer's decision yet.
Are there cer, would there be?
Day before?
Well, let me take a look at my calendar if I could.
There's issues with the.
Can I suggest that, Mr. Kelly, you coordinate that with the office and whatever other issues there, there are, and then get back to the other board members?
Well, let me ask this one question if I could, because it sounds like you have your calendar ready. What days would it have to be between to meet the legal requirements?
The, the legal requirement is that we have to, we're talking about layoff notices. We have to deliver them before May 15th. So we, at the close of business on May 14, they have to be delivered.
Okay. Well, and that doesn't ask my question. What day is the last day we could, to meet the legal requirements? What's the last day we could have the meeting?
The board meeting.
The board meeting. Okay, that's the last day we could do it to have time. And then what's?
Earliest date.
And when, and when will we hear from that hearing officer?
That's a little bit of a crapshoot because they, but they almost always somehow seem to deliver it the afternoon of whatever date our board meeting is. So.
So we have that one day.
What, what day would you be, when would you be unavailable? What's, what's that window?
It looks like the 9th, 10th, 11th.
So would the 8th, Tuesday be a possibility?
It would be a possible, yes.
Well, let us check then to see what the availability would be on the hearing officers for that date.
Okay.
And if the rest of the board has no objection, we'll take a look at that Tuesday, the 8th date, and see if it makes sense.
The day of the teacher. When is that? Is it? So in other words, we, we do the layoffs and then have the day of the teacher. Yep.
Yes, unfortunately.
Well, if, if it can happen, fine.
We will investigate all the options and communicate with you.
Okay.
Okay. Are there any other items from board members for future board meetings? Okay, our next regular scheduled board meeting will be on Thursday, April 19th, right here. And I will recess to closed session.